Motion by Nicole, second by Ann Marie. Under discussion, I thank the board for allowing me a five-minute break there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair vote, time motion passes six zero. Okay, let's move on to item number fourteen. Discussion, take possible action regarding historic landmark preservation ordinance. This was given to us by the town historian Marion O'Keefe. So what I wanted to do was to give this to the board tonight with a quick explanation of it. At our next meeting, we will have it on the agenda as well, and the board can determine if it's something that it would like to send to the ordinance committee. We'd have the ordinance committee review and make recommendations back to the board. So I want to give everybody the opportunity, excuse me, just to review this and have some time. Okay. Item number fifteen. Discussion, take possible action regarding potential ordinance changes. As we know, at our last meeting, excuse me, we had a public hearing. After the public hearing, the ordinance committee took the input that it had heard from the public, as well as input that it had heard from other members of this board, of which I have all that written in my book. And we took, or the ordinance committee, myself, Nicole, and Karen have three recommendations to send back to this board. The first one we're going to start off with is a BLIGHT. After review, after listening to comments from the residents, as well as comments from the board members, the only thing that the board is recommending changing at this point is the definition of ordinary public view. And you can see in your packets, the anti-BLIGHT ordinance and the changes which are signified in RED. "The old language, ordinary public view shall mean the view from public property or the public right-of-way from average grades surrounding the property," that was the old language. "The new language shall mean the view from the average grades surrounding the subject property from public property, a public right-of-way, or private property in reasonably close proximity to the subject property." Our thoughts, at least the three of us, was this would protect folks with back lots and things like that, but we wanted to stress that it has to remain at average grade. It can't be something that you see out of your attic window, something you see from standing on your roof. We don't think that is fair. But we did think that there needs to be some consideration afforded to rear lots and things like that. So that's the only change that the ordinance committee is recommending back to this board. So we wanted to first see what this board thinks of that change, see if this board thinks there should be any other changes considered. And if not, then we will forward this to public hearing again. We'll do that at the beginning of April to allow residents the opportunity to come and comment on this change, as well as any other comments they want on BLIGHT. So that'll open it up to the selectmen to see what comments they have. All right, Nicole, please.
I think it's a good thing, but where we get down to four, does missing damage or boarding of those indoors, damage or missing gutters? Just to let you know, some houses, when there was discussion about it afterwards in the hallway, some houses do not have gutters.
Correct.
Or they do have the gutters, but they don't have downspouts. So I don't know with that.
We interpret as damaged or missing gutters for those that should be there.
Okay.
Certain houses are designed that way, so we're not saying every house has to have a gutter. Again, that's the only change that we made to the ordinance at this point. And if you go back to when these changes were made, back in two thousand and eleven, I believe is the last time we made them, two thousand and twelve, myself, Karen, and Nicole were on the ordinance committee as well, and we went round and round on that as well. So. Any questions or comments? Brian, do we need to take official action on the board to move this to the public hearing? Do we do it now, or do we do it when we set the public hearing?
Do it now.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to forward the town of Seymour's anti- BLIGHT ordinance to public hearing to be held at a date to be determined in April, with one change, and that being the change of ordinary public view as presented. Motion by Karen, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, one good thing, this, um, so the public hearing will only be to talk about this specific change, is that right?
No, they can talk about...
Oh, okay, I thought that's what you said last, maybe I was wrong.
No, they can talk about this specifically, and then anything else, and then they want.
Okay, great.
Now, if no, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's no other, I'm going to forget the word, substantive changes to this that's made by the board, then at that point we can come out in public hearing, and then we can vote to move the ordinance forward for approval twenty-one days later. So that's assuming we make no big changes to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes, I, motion passes six zero. Okay, so that's BLIGHT. Okay, B for noise. We went back and forth on the noise, had a lot of discussion. We talked a lot about enforcement and different things, the equipment that's needed, the training that's needed, how do you enforce the laws, the problems that other communities are having, how the problems that the state has, DEEP has, and it is the recommendation at this point of the ordinance committee to keep our noise ordinance as is. So we're recommending no changes back to the board at this time. Any questions or comments? All right. And then the final one is the adult business ordinance.
Otherwise known as...
Otherwise known, AKA. As you know, our, what we have currently in our ordinance is very light. It's geared basically towards massage polish. It was written many years ago. The three of us were all in agreeance that we wanted to set some type of standard for the town of Seymour. We weren't sure what we could or couldn't do legally. What you see in front of you is the town of Milford's adult-oriented business ordinance. In conversations with town council, Baturla, he thought that it would make sense for us to use this as our guide, and then make any appropriate changes that we feel fit. So he went through, and he changed it to, for Seymour. This, and Brian, I'll ask you to jump in, just so I don't misquote this, but this was just passed by the, or was approved in a court by the Second Circuit, or in two thousand and fifteen?
Yeah, the Second Circuit, you know, takes, or feels that he versus me versus Sealy, Milford, and Powell, who was able to, so that ordinance, that was reported by the court, and I think he gave me the ordinance, so a good start for this, to do, but I'm trying to read that stuff.
Right. And I did speak with Mayor Blake this morning, and he is quite honored that we are looking to piggyback off of one of Milford's ordinances. He actually said that this ordinance has been around for a while. So, you know, he was happy to hear that we were using, and he has no issue at all with Seymour, by the way. So I think, and again, I don't want to speak for Karen and Nicole, but what I'd like everybody to do is to take some time with this now and review it. We'll come back at our next meeting. We'll have more informed discussion with everyone having the opportunity to review this. If everyone is agreeance, then we, in agreeance, excuse me, then we will move this forward to a public hearing as well in April, along with the BLIGHT ordinance. Everybody okay with that? Karen, Nicole, you want to add anything?
I have a question. I noticed with interest the other night on the news that Ansonia is considering an ordinance which would strictly regulate, restrict adult, people who are on the adult offender lists...
Mm-hmm. From coaching.
From, no, 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 from playgrounds. According to Channel Three, Ansonia is restricting them from playgrounds.
Oh, I didn't know that. I thought it was just from coaching. I'll have to look into that.
It was on Channel Three.
Yeah, we can check into that. Roy, can you check into? I know there was a big, a big push for youth sports and things like that, people with criminal backgrounds.
Well, I have no problem with that either, but I just, I thought it was interesting that, that's, I think this is a great ordinance, I really do, but I think we have fiduciary responsibility to protect children on the playground.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if you think about French Memorial Park, look at the places people could hide.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, we can look into that and see what they have, they have written. Roy will look into that and let us know. Questions, comments, thoughts? I mean, this has some quite interesting definitions in here, so I want you to read through. We got a lap out of some of them. So, okay. Okay, item number sixteen. Discussion regarding potential regionalization of services with Ansonia. Discussions are still ongoing. There's really nothing new to update at this point, other than our ambulance associations met last night to discuss the potential merging of the two companies. Some of the mechanics of that would be a little challenging. In Seymour, our ambulance association is volunteer. In Ansonia, it is a department of the town, or, excuse me, a department of the city, I apologize. So we'd have to kind of work our way through that, so we had some initial discussions on that. Town engineer is still reviewing the animal shelter to see what can be done and what the ultimate cost of that will be, so as we have more information, you know, these conversations will be ongoing well into the spring. So I'll just keep providing updates as we come. Any questions on any of that? Okay. Item number seventeen, executive session. We have no executive session. Item number eighteen, appointments. We have no appointments. Item number nineteen, tax refunds and abatements. Nicole?
The following overpayments of tax payments in total of $3,788.28 need to be approved for refund in accordance with the provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes dated the 25th day of February 2016, Dana Flock Tax Office.
Thank you, Nicole. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented. Motion by Nicole, second by Ann Marie. It's under discussion. Take a review, make sure there's no conflict. Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes six zero. Item number twenty, transfers. We have no transfers before us. Item number twenty-one, correspondence. Okay, before we get into the correspondence section, we have some business to clean up from our last meeting. I believe you're here to have some pictures taken. So we have, as you know, last meeting, we approved the, or passed a resolution for the Girl Scouts. So at this point, we have the special proclamation, so we'll take some nice pictures, all of us, and we'll do that now. So before we, why don't you come on up? Everybody, whoa.
At least it's somebody who's losing.
See? I pulled up extra. Kurt, you could at least pull us all over.
Poor dress.
Oh, you're on the road.
Oh, we have cookies on the van.
Why is everybody here getting on like... All right. You know what we're doing, we're going to start to the left. Roy?
Congratulations.
You're wearing the suit, was just complete luck tonight. I was in Hartford this morning, it's the only reason it's on.
So you both agree that the white, the one is a tan coat?
Six gray. And they say tan all the way up to something in the eye of the school.
And then what after that?
She's an lovin' place. And so, Katie, Browning, Junior, he's that, he's that sort, and she's not the that senior Eagle.
So has he seen you like the Eagle Scouts?
Uh, no. Senior is just like, he's that, yes, that's her, is that. Eagle is the highest rank. Golden War is equivalent to Eagle Scout.
And what is the Golden War, come on?
Anytime in high school, and she's trying to work on, am I good? Really, am I good?
That would be impressive, that would be an Eagle Scout and a Gold Girl Scout in one family. That's, that's pretty good.
But you go south, you can have...
Yeah.
Oh, you're fine.
That's right.
Great. Well, congratulations, keep up the hard work. Proud of you.
She's a busy girl.
We got talks from around the world, too.
Thanks. Hope you can ever help in any way, let us, let us know, we'd be more than happy to. Roy's got tons of good ideas back there. All sorts of little projects kicking around. All right, so we'll continue on with correspondence. We have the check register. We have a letter from the Valley Community Foundation, and it has also specific information on the town of Seymour Endowment Fund. Your review. We have an email, and also, most of you should have received, I believe this says a mail piece, from Joe, Joseph Luciano, with regards to code ordinance, chapter two, part two, chapter fourteen. We have a letter from Governor Malloy congratulating the town of Seymour on the $200,000 STEEP grant that it received to continue phase five of our sidewalk replacement program. We have a letter, which you've just gotten today, from myself, to Commissioner Barnes, or Secretary Barnes, I should say, to OP, I'm just letting him know that we did take care of our reevaluation, as required by Connecticut General Statute. And then also, I know it's hard to see, but I will be meeting before the end of the week with town engineer Ryan Asteriak and Chief Messler with regards to changing the direction of First Street to make it one-way from Town Hall out to Route 67, to allow us to change the parking to diagonal, which would pick up ten additional parking spaces just on First Street. This is something that was identified in the downtown action plan, so it's something that we will be moving forward with. Again, that is determined, okay, the direction of the street is determined by the traffic authority, which is the chief of police, so I wanted to bring it to the board to tend to, so the board was aware, and we can let you know if they have any questions or concerns. Okay, yeah, closes correspondence. So move on to item number twenty-two, public comment. Is there any public comment? Come on up to the microphone, Mr. Flynn, you know the drill. Whatever you like, Mr. Flynn. His name and address for the record, as always, please, sir.
Michael Flynn, eighty-five Skokelat Street. I'd just like to ask a question, why do we need three town engineers in this town? Is anybody up with that? Do we have three town engineers? Do we just have one?
I can't answer.
Oh, you can't answer that question?
I can, but not during public comment.
Oh, all right, okay. Another thing, in light of what happened at Flat High School, there was a couple of rumbles there in Merritt, and do we have a contingency plan available, should something happen at the Seymour High School, where the police response time can be remedied? We do? Okay, just wanted to know. What's that?
Can you answer?
Should it be updated?
What I talk about during the selectmen's comments is what I talk about, but I probably speak towards those two things.
No, okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, is there any other public comment? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name's Bernard Loukensky, forty-six, Patton Avenue, Seymour, Connecticut. Interior lots, okay? I have an interior lot to the left-hand side of me. My other neighbors don't have a problem with my property. My neighbors don't have problems with the people in front of my house. We have a conflict of interest at times. And how do, how can I say it? Protect somebody like me, I've been at my residence for fifty years. My other resident has been there for better than fifty years. We have an interior lot that's been put in ten years ago. It's been nothing but a problem. They complain about us living the way we live. And I just don't think it's fair that somebody can buy a house and tell me, or tell somebody else, how to live. I mean, granted, yes, they drive by my front of my house, their house is in my backyard, so they can pick on my backyard and my front yard, and the people that live in front of them, their backyard, and the other person's backyard. I just don't think it's fair that somebody who buys an interior lot can bully somebody. That's all I can say. I just don't think your interior lot idea is fair to people that lived in the town for many years, and somehow a house gets put in. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comment? Okay, there are no public comment, we'll close public comment, and move on to selectmen's public comments, and we'll start with staff.
Thank you. Last weekend, I went to CCM's newly elected officials workshop. I found it to be very informative, and it was really a great event. I would encourage any of you who have not gone to one of their events to go as soon as possible. They are a good time.
They are.
Just a couple of things that have been brought to my attention recently. On Ants Moore Road, apparently there's a big lighting issue, and also now a crime issue. I've been informed, I'm sure many of you are aware, that there's been some, like burglaries and possible car thefts on the street. People I've talked to attribute that to the lighting situation. I'm not sure if that's been addressed yet, but hopefully that will be addressed soon, if not. And I just wanted to ask if there is money in the budget at all, if there has been, for taking down trees at French Park? I know there's some people concerned about that.
Yes, a substantial amount of money has been spent taking trees down at French Memorial Park.
Okay. Some people think it's still not enough, I guess.
Yeah.
And then, I was just asked to look into, like, signs for downtown that point, that are more visible, pointing where people are allowed to park. I know...
EDC's working on that.
Yeah, I knew they were working on it, I just didn't know if there was any update on that.
I would expect it to be by springtime.
Okay. Yeah, because I heard that they were talking about that, but I haven't seen anything done with it, so.
Yeah, they have the, the location set, they have the signs set. It's going to be the same theme as our other signs, we're going to have that one consistent theme. New Age is doing it, so we can check with Bruce to see what his schedule is, but I think the expectation is by springtime that they're up.
Great. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Karen?
I've noticed for the past two or three weeks that there's a private contractor parked at Public Works, and I wondered what the explanation for that is.
Paletti Tree is kind of the town's unofficial tree guy, goes back, I don't know, probably before Paul. Does a lot of work for the town, gives the town a very fair price to help with that. He leaves that one piece of equipment there that he uses for town trees. So, I mean, other people have brought that same point up as well. If he wasn't, if they weren't doing as much work as they were for the town, and at the discount that they give us, then the truck wouldn't do that. But on top of our new bucket truck, sure, God bless, it may take us long to spend a hundred grand, but sure enough, our bucket truck has arrived, it's very nice and pretty, it's getting its final pinstriping and stickers and everything put on. And we expect to have it in Seymour in the fleet by next week. Thursday, even better, with the guys trained, Thursday and Friday then, eventually. So by middle to the end of next week, the bucket truck should be up and operational. With the weather, I've already asked Tony DiPrimo to get a crew out immediately trimming trees. So, I didn't mean to hijack your question, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, that's by all right. Two other, this is old business. How are we coming on opening Town Hall five days a week?
All right, it's not the second. Yeah, I'll have something for you guys to vote on it the next week.
Okay.
And we, the employees understand that Town Hall will be open on Fridays, it's just a matter of hours, so.
And rotating the staff?
I don't think we're going to go with rotating the staff, I think we're just going to go with pure five, open five days. That's oddly enough, that the employees prefer that, to give them an opportunity to vote. So I didn't think they would go that way. I prefer it, Rory prefers it, because if it was the other way, Rory would have been stuck here, eight to five-thirty Monday through Friday, which wouldn't necessarily have been fair to him, but they wanted, essentially what it's going to be is eight to four-thirty, or what I'm going to recommend to you guys, I think, is eight to four-thirty Monday through Thursday, and either eight to twelve, or nine to one on Fridays.
Okay.
So.
And the last thing is really old business.
How old?
When we dedicated the park at Broad Street, I've been asking about a crosswalk.
Yep.
And I just wondered if there's been any progress.
Roy, where are we? We sent letters, the chief sent letters.
Not on the priority list.
No. Because it's going to require them to do curb cuts and things like that, so it's not as simple as, and if you recall, on Main Street, we had an issue, you know, our engineer determined where the curb cut should go, the state disagreed with it, and wouldn't move the crosswalk. If you remember, last year we had that. So they're not the easiest to deal with sometimes. But we'll continue to push on.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, that's a battle, though. All right, Nicole?
I have nothing for tonight.
Here you go. Al?
Yeah, doctor is the, Eagle is the highest rank, Gold Award is equivalent to the Eagle Scout.
And what is the Gold Award for now?
Anytime in high school, and she's trying to work on my skills, for her skills.
Really high skills?
That would be impressive, that would be an Eagle Scout and a Gold Girl Scout one family, that's, that's pretty good.
For the Eagle Scout.
Yeah.
How are you finding?
Well, congratulations, keep up the hard work. Proud of you.
Mm-hmm.
Fellow Girl Scout.
She's a busy girl.
We got talks from around the world too.
Hope you can ever help in any way, let us, let us know, we'd be more than happy to.
Yeah.
Roy's got tons of good ideas packed there. All sorts of little projects kicking around. All right, so we'll continue on with correspondence. We have the check register. We have a letter from the Valley Community Foundation, and it has also specific information on the town of Seymour Endowment Fund. Your review. We have an email, and also, most of you should have received, I believe this says a mail piece, from Joe, Joseph Luciano, with regards to code ordinance, chapter two, part two, chapter fourteen. We have a letter from Governor Malloy congratulating the town of Seymour on the two hundred thousand dollar steep grant that it received to continue phase five of our sidewalk replacement program. We have a letter, which you've just gotten today, from myself to Commissioner Barnes, or Secretary Barnes, I should say, for OP, I'm just letting him know that we did take care of our reevaluation as required by Connecticut General Statute. And then also, I know it's hard to see, but I will be meeting before the end of the week with town engineer Ryan Asteriak and Chief Messler with regards to changing the direction of First Street to make it one-way from Town Hall out to Route sixty-seven to allow us to change the parking to diagonal, which would pick up ten additional parking spaces just on First Street. This is something that was identified in the downtown action plan, so it's something that we will be moving forward with. Again, that is determined, okay, the direction of the street is determined by the traffic authority, which is the chief of police, so I wanted to bring it to the board to tell you so the board was aware, so anyone could let me know if they have any questions or concerns. Okay, that closes correspondence. So we'll move on to item number twenty-two, public comment. Is there any public comment? Come on up to the microphone, Mr. Flynn, you know the drill. Whatever you like, Mr. Flynn. His name and address for the record is always, please, sir.
Michael Flynn, eighty-five Skokelat Street. I'd just like to ask a question, why do we need three town engineers in this town? Is anybody up with that? Do we have three town engineers? Do we just have one?
I can't answer.
Oh, you can't answer that question?
I can, but not during public comment.
Oh, okay. Another thing, in light of what happened at Platt High School, there was a couple of rumbles there in Meriden. Do we have a contingency plan available, should something happen at the Seymour High School, where the police response time can be remedied? We do? Okay, just wanted to know. What's that?
Can't answer.
Should it be updated?
What I talk about during the selectman's comments is what I talk about, but I probably speak towards those two things.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, is there any other public comment? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name's Bernard Loukensky, forty-six Patton Avenue, Seymour, Connecticut. Interior lots, okay? I have an interior lot to the left-hand side of me. My other neighbors don't have a problem with my property. My neighbors don't have problems with the people in front of my house. We have a conflict of interest at times. And how do you, how can I say it? Protect somebody like me, I've been at my residence for fifty years. My other resident has been there for better than fifty years. We have an interior lot that's been put in ten years ago, has been nothing but a problem. They complain about us living the way we live. And I just don't think it's fair that somebody can buy a house and tell me or tell somebody else how to live. I mean, granted, yes, they drive by my front of my house, their house is in my backyard, so they can pick on my backyard and my front yard. And the people that live in front of them, their backyard, and the other person's backyard. I just don't think it's fair that somebody who buys an interior lot can bully somebody. That's all I can say. I just don't think your interior lot idea is fair to people that lived in the town for many years, and somehow a house gets put in. That's all I can say. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comments? Okay, here we go, public comment, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to selectmen's public comments, and we'll start with stuff.
Thank you. Last weekend, I went to CCM's newly-elected officials workshop. I found it to be very informative, and it was really a great event. I would encourage any of you who have not gone to one of their events to go as soon as possible. They are a good time.
They are.
Just a couple of things that have been brought to my attention recently. On Ants Moore Road, apparently there's a big lighting issue, and also now a crime issue. I've been informed, I'm sure many of you are aware, that there's been some, like burglaries